All right, I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Urbana, regular meeting of the Urbana City Council for Monday, August 14th, 2023. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Ms. Colacetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin? Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here.
Next item is approval of minutes. Do we have minutes? Additions to the agenda. There are none. We'll move on to presentations and public input. We'll go with public input first since we have a number of presentations. Does anyone wish to address the Urbana City Council? Seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. And the first is the Urbana Free Library Annual Report. And please state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Celeste Choat, and this is Associate Director Rachel Fuller. And we are absolutely delighted to be here in front of you today to talk to you about our annual report. As you know, pursuant to the Local Library Act, the Board of Trustees of the Urbana Free Library, within 60 days after the close of the fiscal year, is to report in writing on the condition of their trust on the last day of the fiscal year. That's very fancy for us saying that statutory, the state requires that the library board report back to you how things went during the year under their control. So we are here to do that. The library board approved the annual report, which you have in your packet, as well as we have what's called the Illinois Public Library Annual Report, the IBLAR. And so those two documents live together. Our Secretary, Daniel Urban, who is here with us today, signed off that those were a true accounting of the library's business. And Rachel and I are here to give you a quick overview of some high-level elements of the library and the work that we did last year, and where we're positioning ourselves to go next year. As I always do, we want to thank our colleagues here at the city and thank the support of the city council. We could not do what we do without our colleagues at the city and the support that you provide us. And we are thankful for your time and energy and positivity. So we did a number of strategic planning elements this year, initiatives. We are working on the strategic plan, which was from 2020 through 2023. The staff, our community, and our board have been pleased with how that is going. On a monthly basis, we report out in the director's report to the library board the different initiatives that we have done during that month that meet our strategic pillars. I can't talk tonight. Which are embrace, enrich, empower, and enhance. So we had a small team of people that worked with a planner with us to work through how it's going well, what we could do differently. We did a focus group. Sorry, we didn't do a focus group. We did a survey of the community and got a number of responses. We tried to have focus groups. People are really busy this summer, so that didn't work for us in that way. We got feedback from staff. And then we took that data along with information we have about our community, including census data. And we met with our management team and our planner. And we came up with some ideas that we've brought to the library board at a very high level. And we'll be bringing a written report, a draft strategic plan, to the library board in September, if all goes as planned. We are working on a building program. We started the building program with former library director Fred Schliff. The building program, which was pie in the sky, everything that we ever wanted, was much too large for the space that we have. So we have been working on pulling that back to a bit of dreaming, but also more realistic for what our community could use and what we have space and land and potentially funds for. So we are working with the organization Engberg Anderson, an architectural firm that works with libraries on building programs. And we will be presenting a building program in the next couple, three months to the library board as well. That will help identify future trends that we see for needs for our building to serve our community. For example, the Champagne County Historical Archives is in three separate locations. It's in the main building. It's in the basement of Lincoln Square, and it's in the Tepper Building next door. That's not a very efficient way for us to make the collection accessible to the community. And we're renting the space at Lincoln Square, so ultimately, that's not desirable. We don't have a big enough teen space. Anyone who's seen the few aisles of books that we have there for them and the couple of booths know that that's not the best that we can do for our community. So we've identified these bigger picture things, as well as some specifics in the departments that would serve us better. And again, we're going to be finishing that up in the next couple of months, which is very exciting. And then earlier this year, Rachel and her colleague Dawn developed a way to run the library more efficiently. And we have reorganized ourselves into working, quote-unquote, "front of the house and back of the house." So people with similar types of jobs are now working under supervisors that are focusing in that way. And it's cut down on multiple people having to have the same conversations. So people are excited. It's more efficient. And we are happy with how things are moving ahead. Thinking about the big picture and serving our community well and providing greater opportunities for our staff to focus in on fewer responsibilities in the areas in which they've said they will thrive. So that's very exciting. We're also looking at creating welcoming and efficient spaces. So we're looking at remodeling our circulation audiovisual area. If you've been up there, you know there's a lot of stuff, a lot of shelving. And we've been combining things, moving the hold shelves around, so that when people come in, we're going to hopefully take down that. It is the plan. It is everyone's desire to take down the big circulation desk, which made sense back in 2005, but is currently a barrier. If you are someone at the welcome desk, which is what we're calling it now, in the middle of a 55-foot desk, it's 27 feet for you to walk around and get to the person on the other side and take them to the shelving to show them what they need and how they can get there, as opposed to saying it's that way. So we're looking at ways that we can be more efficient with our time and be more welcoming and friendly to our community who deserves our best attention. We are looking at updating Megan's Room, which is a very special, small amphitheater space in the children's area downstairs. It is wonderful and well-loved, but it's not as accessible as it might be. And we have a lot of grandparents and other older caregivers that work with their kids. And there are multiple levels of steps. And it's not always easy for people to know where to put their feet. And we don't want anyone to have any tumbles in the library. So we're looking at something that will be easier to maintain and be safer for everyone involved. And it's also 20, almost 20 years old. So we're thinking that's going to be whatever we do. And there is going to be great and exciting, and people are going to be very pleased. This isn't as sexy, but the East Airhandler Unit needs to be replaced, which is going to be between $550,000 and $650,000. And, you know, moving the air around well and efficiently, that's really important. Heating and cooling is super important. And so it's not sexy, but it is super important and will be a big part of this year and next year's budget as well. So we're going to be going out to bid on that very shortly, if all things go as planned. So working on these three big projects this year, and they're moving into fiscal '24 as well. And over to Rachel.
So in addition... Okay, right. Thanks for your patience. I'm new. So in addition to the initiative Celeste has talked about, the library also continued the important work of engaging, serving, and supporting our community. A few highlights from this year include the Teen Open Lab celebrating its 10th anniversary. Teen Open Lab is an after-school maker space for teens that allows for play and creative facilitation, use of tools such as 3D printing, sticker design and vinyl cutting, playing musical instruments like guitar and drums, video gaming, sewing, crafting of all sorts, painting. At our 10th anniversary celebration this year, teens tried out our brand-new virtual reality headsets, worked on a mural that will be displayed in an Urbana school, and of course, enjoyed some delicious pizza. Over the course of its tenure life, Teen Open Lab is proud to have hosted over 28,000 visitors. So we were happy to have celebrated its 10th anniversary. Additionally, thanks to city funding, the library is using ARPA grant monies to hire a bilingual programming specialist. We are currently accepting applications for that position. And the position once hired will focus on youth services, storytimes, outreach, et cetera. Additionally, the archives, which is located within the Urbana Free Library, received funding from the Illinois State Historical Records Advisory Board, grant funding that would allow us to process the Stephen Storch Photography Collection. Stephen Storch was a photographer in the Champagne-Urbana area who for decades photographed important life events and celebrations, things like weddings, graduations, and decades of the local cotillion ball. Stephen Storch's photography collection included over 82,000 photo negatives. And with the grant funding, we were able to go through the collection and identify items as priority for digitization. Cotillion, in particular, was identified as a priority for digitization. Up next, archive staff will work on developing a finding aid for the collection and sharing the news far and wide with community partners. The library is fortunate to benefit from the support of two separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations, the Friends of the Urbana Free Library and the Urbana Free Library Foundation. The Friends have a goal to support and foster relationships between the library and the wonderful community that we serve, and most recently, held two book sales per year, averaging about $17,000 in funds raised per year. The funds that are raised go to support prizes and books for the collection. The prizes support our summer and winter reading programs, as well as our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten initiative. In fiscal '23, thanks to our Friends, the library was also able to purchase new tables for our conference room and our auditorium, which are safer and easier, more efficient to use. Staff and community members love them. In addition to the Friends, the foundation also supports the mission of the library, and they provide larger support for capital projects. You can see a photo there on the right of the foundation's support of restoring the library's porch from the 1918 section of the building, when it needed that restoration. The foundation accepts funds in any amount year-round. And in fiscal '23, raised over $88,000 with 267-plus gifts. We're thankful to them and the Friends for their support of our initiatives. So, and we'd like to close with just a little bit of a snapshot of what happened at the library today. So as of today, at 2:00 PM, there were 29,567 items that were currently checked out by members in our community. Those items have an estimated worth of $624,915.65. It is important to note that of those 29,000 items, almost 2,500 of them are electronic content, eBooks, e-audiobooks, et cetera. And our integrated library system does not have an estimated cost associated with them. If we were to figure in the average estimated cost of that e-content, that $624,000 would be closer to $775,000. And so we are pleased to be able to offer almost 30,000 items to our community members today.
It's just like Zoom. Forget to unmute. So here's information. If you want to go ahead and contact the library, please share this information with your constituents. Reference@urbanaFree.org. If you need to reach out to me, celeste@urbanafree.org. Do you have any questions for us? Chris?
That's a one-day total, the 29,000?
That's correct, yes.
That's incredible. Okay.
It's what's checked out today.
Yes.
That's amazing. Okay. Yeah, I guess if people are doing multiple things, I guess that makes sense. Okay, so I have two questions. First one is, I think you called it the Tepper Building, the little orange building to the west. What is that? And what, do you use it? Do you own it? I mean...
Currently, it is owned by the city, and we're in the process of transferring it over from an agreement that the city and the library made in 2004. So you'll see something about that a little bit later on, actually.
Okay.
It is, was an old law firm.
Right.
And was purchased back in the day when properties were being purchased and the library was being expanded. We use it to store archives there, archival materials.
So you sort of need that building and like to keep it?
Currently, we do, yes.
Okay. Last question, and I apologize. This is kind of a usual sticking point for me. It's the ignorant dreamer. I just keep envisioning a gigantic mural on that west side. So just want to throw that out there.
Oh, sure, thank you. The west side, being created in metal as opposed to sandstone, was built back in 2005 for potential expansion.
Okay.
So if the library is to expand, it would expand onto that Tepper Building property.
So you need to, yeah, okay.
So we wouldn't want to put a mural there. But if there's an expansion in the future, crossing our fingers that that would be the case, then we could consider what that would look like in a structure that's kind of built out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. James?
Thank you both for your report. I did want to recognize the tenure of the Teen Open Lab because I have a graduate/ survivor of the Teen Open Lab from, in my household. And it was a wonderful experience, a wonderful resource for teenagers. When you talked about the building visioning, you mentioned the archives. You know, I was on the library board from 2002 to 2010, when that last expansion occurred. And that wall was designed, Chris, so that it could be punched out for whatever the next phase, whenever that might happen. Back then, it seemed a long way away. But here we are. The archives is a key item. I appreciate that you're looking at how to get those resources into one place. That's great. The teen space, clearly a great item. The thing that I would ask about is public meeting/collaboration space. Is that on the docket? That's already been kind of drawn up as to what we need more of in downtown Urbana?
That is definitely on our minds. We would love more study rooms and other types of spaces where people can come together. Currently, we have the Lewis Auditorium, and then we have the Satterthwaite Conference Room and two study rooms upstairs. Those are our meeting rooms. Sometimes we use the rooms in the pretty side of the building, in the oldest part, for rooms. There's a Glaston Space, the McFarland-Hood Reading Room for programs and such. But there just isn't a lot of space where people can come together and collaborate.
All right, thank you. And then, from a standpoint of what a future looks like, my recollection is that the city or the library owns everything on that block, to cedar, from green to elm, except for one property. Is that still the case?
That is still the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice?
Thank you, Celeste, for your presentation. And Rachel, I appreciate it. And of course, I'm always yay library. I think we have the bomb library. But I just wanted to let you know that, and I wanted to ask if there would be a possibility for the presentation that you gave us tonight, because we didn't have it in our packet, if you could send it electronically?
Sure, absolutely.
And I would like to have a copy of that. And I also just want to tell you how much I appreciate the good job that you guys do. And I'm really always excited about how Urbana Free Library and what Tuftful does for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on the comprehensive plan update. Please introduce yourselves for the record. You're welcome. And we have a new person up here, so. Speak into the mic, please.
Not the camera. Hi, I'm Andrea Rudi, Senior Advisor for Integrated Strategy Development here with the city. And with me is Tarek Azim, who has recently joined the city as Management Analyst. And it was perfect timing as we finished up this phase of our comp plan engagement. And he's been the one that has put together our data for us with the nice charts that you're about to see. And so if you have specific questions about the data, Tarek is here to answer any of those for you. So what we'd like to do is update you on this latest phase of community engagement. But just to refresh your memory, this is where we're at. You see that little bubble there that says, "We are here." So we've had the first round of community engagement that went back to spring of 2021. That's when we launched our Imagine Urbana website. We had the different engagement tools on there, everything from the Places Map to the Ideal Wall, as well as the survey. We published those results in October of 2022. We also had Examine Urbana. That was the last thing that we were presented to the council. And we also had our assessment of the 2005 Plan as well. So now, the latest we had was a different type of community engagement where people decided how the city should spend its money. And so we did an online activity, as well as in-person activities in each ward. So we'll talk a little bit more about those and what happened. So I apologize for this one slide. It has a lot of data on it, but we'll get through this pretty quickly. So the website, again, was launched for this activity on June 1st, just this past summer. And we really wanted to center on the data that we got from the Imagine Urbana Phase 1. So we had five themes that appeared, and you're going to see those a little bit later. But those five themes were in the summary that we published in October of '22. And so the feedback that we hope to get from this phase of community engagement is going to help us determine how best to accomplish what the community has prioritized for us. And so we'll go through that data. So there was a top priorities activity. I've got some slides that we'll quickly go through those. But people were to choose three out of seven. And we got those issues from feedback from the community, as well as staff feedback that we had, and current events. So there were seven themes, and we'll go over those. There was also a "Learn More" button that people could find out more about that specific topic. And we had 67 online and in-person respondents to that. And so we'll go through that data. Then the other exercise was the spending priority activity. And everybody was given $100 in Vanna bucks to balance their budget. We had $100 on the revenue side, and so they had $100 in expenses. And there were many more options to spend your money on than just your $100. So people really did have to prioritize what was most important to them. And one of the things we found is that once people started putting money on their priorities, sometimes their priorities changed. So interesting data. And so we had 65 online and in-person respondents for that. So the first activity, again, the top priority, some of you maybe remember the screen. There were seven different topics to choose from, and you can see those here. And we looked at various methods to analyze that data. But no matter what method we used, the same three priorities appeared. Maybe not in the same order each time. So we listed them alphabetically here. And again, this is just this first exercise. So affordable and diverse housing, safe and healthy community, and strong local economy. And like I said, those are just in alphabetical order.
Excuse me, Andrea. I've been asked if you could use fullscreen for the viewers at home.
I'm sorry? Yeah, let's just apologize.
Showing up different on some of the others.
Well... There we go. Maybe? Nope, it's still going to show it.
Okay. Now it's showing up fullscreen over here.
But not on here. I know the library was the same.
Okay.
Well, we can, we're able to see this.
Okay, so sorry. Yeah, I know the library presentation was the same.
Showing up fullscreen for the viewers at home, I think we're okay. Thank you.
So it won't show notes, but it will show the next slide, so apologize. So the rankings for the top seven, as you saw, we already saw what those three were. And then followed by environmental sustainability, safe and accessible transportation, cultural vibrancy, and transparent and effective governance. So it came out that these two really tied. Safe and healthy and strong local economy were the top vote-getters. So then we looked at ZIP codes. So people were, the reason we asked ZIP codes, we really just wanted to see which ones replied from Urbana and which were outside of Urbana. We only have two ZIP codes, so it's not a lot of in-depth analysis there. But we did want to have people actually put in their ZIP code. And in this slide, it shows that the ZIP code respondents really reflect the population of Urbana, which we thought was interesting. So we really did have a good representation based on Urbana ZIP codes. Also, we compared it to Urbana-registered voters. And it's very comparable to Urbana voters as well. Just interesting data to see. So then the second activity, this is where we had the $100 for the community to spend on what their priorities were. And so the five themes you see here, those were what came out of the first round of community engagement and that were published in the report that we had in October of 2022. So housing in neighborhoods, community health and safety, transportation and infrastructure, cultural and economic vibrancy, and city and community services. And then we had options that people could choose, and they had dollar amounts associated with those. And the dollar amounts reflected, you can see this one, for instance, was $35. You have some that were much less than that, at $10. So to be a higher dollar amount, it was either it actually does physically cost hard dollars, more dollars to accomplish that goal, or it requires staff time, much more staff time. So people understood that and really made wise choices based on, you know, what the costs were. So, people understood that and really made wise choices based on, you know, what the costs were. So, this is how the ranking came out for their priorities for these five themes. And the five themes are down at the bottom, and they're color-coded for each theme. So, as just for an example, housing in neighborhoods would be the two blue bars, similarly down the line with the other ones. And so, you can see which ones came in higher. So, diverse housing and convenient neighborhoods ranked the highest in the spending priorities. Interesting to note that, I think Tarek was the one that brought this up, that those two priorities are really not the most expensive ones. And for priorities, you can see some of the higher-cost ones didn't rank as high. So, the next one that came in was safe and accessible transportation, which was one of the more expensive items. So, it was interesting to just see how people, how their choices really reflected their personal experience with the city. And I'll provide these slides for everybody, so that you can have them afterwards. So, then, this is how, those five categories. Now, you can see which themes people spent their money on. So, housing in neighborhoods got the most spend on it, followed by transportation and infrastructure, and cultural and economic vibrancy. Zip codes, again, very comparable to the population zip codes. And again, one thing I didn't mention, that in this exercise, this reflects the online and in-person both. So, we consolidated those into this data. Age of respondents, very similar too. There's a little bit finer breakdown of Urbana-registered voters. As you can see, there's a 65-plus category that's separated. But you can see, again, that it's very comparable. So, then, we're going to look at just what we got on the in-person side. So, to refresh your memory, we held an activity, at least one activity, in every ward. And we focused on, we were trying to focus on people that traditionally don't get involved in their government. And so, we really went, picked different places within the ward, trying to reach people to go where they are, instead of them having to come to us. So, they had their $100 in Vanna bucks. This is a sample of the $10 one. They could put them in a bucket. And in those buckets, we described each of the options. And so, this is a sample of the front and back of one of those cards. So, we had 39 people actually participate in the activity onsite, actually complete the entire activity onsite. We had another 24 that we talked to about it. Sometimes, they were going to go back and do it online. One of them at Aspen Court, for instance, I think the heat index was 180. I don't know, it was so hot. And so, several people would say they were going to go back and do it in the air conditioning. So, we hope they did do that. So, they could use the QR code and do that online. You can see this table set up here in the lower right. That's what the exercise looked like. We had a couple of different versions, but essentially, people put them in the buckets, and we monitored that. They also, some of the options had either a sustainability point that you got for that, or an equity point, because it directly affected sustainability or equity. So, these are the, where we held the seven meetings, and we've got the ward map here. You can see where we held them. Channing Murray, 25 o'clock, Dr. King Elementary, Freedom School, which is really where adult education is now, Town and Country Apartments, Aspen Court, and also Steer Place. Here's some of the pictures from those activities. Like I said, it was very rewarding to see people spend the time and actually complete the exercise. And I know many of you attended those as well, so we really appreciate that. So, we decided to show you information by ward. And so, here, we highlighted in a star where the ward is. The ward colors, there's a different color for every ward. That's why you see the different bars here. So, Ward 1 happens to be purple. So, in Ward 1, the top three vote-getters were create convenient neighborhoods, diversify housing options, and invest in safer and more accessible transportation. So, you can see the results there. Ward 2, the highest vote-getter was eliminate barriers to well-planned development and focus on better community engagement. And then, we had a tie amongst create convenient neighborhoods, support healthy and community initiatives, and enhance Urbana as a destination for music and the arts. Ward 3 is not on here. Unfortunately, we did not have attendance at the event that we had at Dr. King Elementary. So, we're skipping that one and going to Ward 4. We had one person in Ward 4, so that's why you see it. However, that was probably the most engaged person that we had. I think we learned a lot from him, as well as hopefully, he learned from this exercise as well. But we got a lot of great feedback from that individual. Ward 5, the top vote-getter, diversify housing options across the city and support healthy and community initiatives. And then, there was a tie between invest in neighborhood safety and invest in safer and more accessible transportation. And then, Ward 6, we had an event at Aspen Court. There was some confusion about the previous location was Salt and Light. And so, we found out that there were a couple of people that showed up for that event, even though it had been canceled. So, we held another event. We invited those people to come to City Hall, and we had one here. So, that's why you see a little bit higher number of participation here. So, we had, the highest one was invest in neighborhood safety, followed by diversify housing options across the city, and then, focus on better community engagement. So, hopefully, they felt like this was an exercise in better community engagement. And then, finally, Ward 7, the top vote-getter was invest in safer, more accessible transportation, invest in neighborhood safety, and support healthy and community initiatives. So, you can see there was some variety by ward. Some of the areas that we're in did lack transportation. And so, you might see more, a higher response on something like that. Others, because they liked being able to walk in their neighborhood, the connected neighborhood resonated with them as well. So, as far as our next steps, we kind of grade out all the things that we've accomplished so far. So, we're here right now summarizing for Plan Commission and City Council. You're hearing it before Plan Commission, because they didn't have a quorum Thursday night. So, we're going to have that one followed up at their next meeting. So, now, after we summarize this feedback, we're really going to look at all the data that we've gathered, start drafting goals, visions, objectives, based on that community feedback. We're going to start drafting the plan. And we've got some software that I think you're really going to find very useful, that it's going to allow the public to see our drafts and make comment on those back to us. We'll have some open meetings as well to do it in person, but it really will be an online live editing of the comp plan as we go forward. So, hopefully, we'll be on track to have a draft by the end of this year. And then, we'll still have time for community engagement after that for feedback. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And like I said, Tarek's here to get into the weeds with you on any of the data.
We'll start down at number one, Ward 1. Very awesome.
Thank you. Would you mind going back to some of the initial numbers that you had when you were summarizing before the Ward 1? Keep going.
So, the priorities or the spending?
Yeah, I think it was the, well, it was the priorities. There was a summary one where you color-coded everything, and it was a bar chart.
It's the busy bar chart.
Is it the busy bar chart?
I think so.
All right.
Well, maybe not. It's before this one. You're up here, I think. Sorry. This one?
Yes, the busy bar chart. Thank you. Okay. So, I'm assuming that those numbers at the top are the number of people? Is that right? That answered that specific question?
It's actually the number of selections total. So, people could pick anywhere from roughly three to five to build out their budget, close to $100, right? So, they had $100 that they could spend on various city services. And they could really pick any number, as long as it didn't exceed $100.
Yeah, I'm trying to refresh my memory in terms of that whole exercise, because there were chips, and there were things that we put in buckets and so forth. But it was really creative. So, I'm just, when you took, take one of the buckets for which one here? Diversified housing, is that the number of chips that were in total? 37 chips, is that?
So, the chips had to do with equity and sustainability. So, that was separate from what you're seeing here. So, when you voted on something, oftentimes, there was a direct correlation with a sustainability component or equity component. So, the chips don't, aren't reflected here. This is just the Vanna bucks that went in, and people voted with their money.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's what I was trying, so, we'll put aside the chips. So, we have Vanna bucks, right? And you have 100 of them, and you have to distribute them. You can't overspend 100. So, was there 37 people, or there, because people could put all their money in one. I remember you were talking about that some people just dumped all their money into one particular...
We tried to limit that, because we really wanted them to spend, or if they didn't want to vote on anything else, then only spend, like for instance, $35 on transportation, then they could pocket the rest if they didn't want to spend it. So, we tried not to have everybody put all their eggs in one basket, because each item had a cost to it, and we didn't want them spending more on that.
Right, right, right.
So, did we answer your question, though, about what the 37 means? I think Tarek might have...
So, 37 people put $15 down on that item.
I'm sorry?
37 people put $15 down on that item.
That was my question. Is that what that means? Okay, all right, thank you. Sharice.
Considering the fact that there was no attendance for the Ward 3, and there was a conflict in my community regarding the reason why there was no attendance, I'm finding out, is there a way that we can re-schedule something like that for Ward 3 to it? Because I would hate for it to be a situation where everyone else decides what's going to happen in my ward. So, I would really like to, at least to get a few voices from my ward. I don't care if it's just the one, like the one from J S. One is better than zero. So, thank you, I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely. Think of a location and a time that works better. We'd be glad to do that.
Okay, thank, maybe now that King School, that schools are back open, it won't be so difficult to have that setup again.
It was a great setup, but...
Yeah, it was, it was great. Okay, thanks.
Chris.
So, what we're seeing tonight is 65 people, right? And the comprehensive plan has been online for some time, and there's been a lot of more responses. So, I, my understanding was there was over 300 people interacting with that comprehensive map. Is that right?
Yeah, this is specific to this exercise, yes. So, just 65 people either did it online, or they were at one of our events and communicated that way.
Okay. So, when we go to formulate visions, goals, priorities, based on community feedback, it'll encompass all this?
It sure will, right.
Okay, thank you.
James.
Yeah, so, a quick question is, did we have a target number for participation in the Balancing Act?
We did not, but Balancing Act did. And for each of the exercises, as far as what our participation percentages were, we exceeded their expectations on both. And I can provide you with that data. They gave us what the, what their averages are for communities that participate. And so, they were very pleased with the results. And like I said, we did not have goals.
Yeah, and I know what they're doing is they're taking snapshots, right? I mean, it's spread throughout the city. What happened with Sharice's word, where nobody put any input in, that shouldn't happen. I will note, and one person, one engaged person, that's great. But we don't know, you know, what else is out there. I will, I mention this because we had a good session at Steer Place.
Yeah, we did.
And it was advertised, but the only people who participated were, I think, mostly. There may have been one person that wasn't from Steer Place.
They were mostly residents, yeah.
They were residents of Steer Place, which I think is reflected in the outcome that you saw, because their concern is transporta, access to transportation ability to move around. So, I know this is just one dimension of it, but I have a feeling, I'm concerned that 67, or whatever the number was, is a pretty, a pretty small snapshot. I'd like to understand better, and Mary Alice could tell us maybe this better, what the statistical value of that kind of a narrow look. I know we can't just keep on doing this. We got to take information and go in. But I would certainly say that it feels like another shot at at least a few of these would be valuable to increase the numbers.
If I could just address one aspect of what you've talked about. Like I said, our goal was to reach people who aren't traditionally involved in their government. Because we feel like the online versions, that's where people, maybe, you know, they're used to that. But we really needed to go out into those neighborhoods to get them involved. And I think, I think that's one thing that we were able to do. Like you said, it was the, especially at Town and Country was the other one. We had great participation from the residents. And that's really what we were, what we were trying to achieve there. We did invite everybody. We sent in each of the, I can provide you with those numbers. I think I did individually to each of you when we had our events, how many letters went out in the neighborhoods that surrounded that event. So, we mailed to the surrounding neighborhood as well. People just, you know, they chose not to come.
I understand the nature of the exercise is not high throughput. I mean, you couldn't do this at the farmer's market and get 100 people through it. It's just, it's too complicated to do that. I guess my other question is, is there any commentary or advice from the Balancing Act folks? One of the things, you mentioned that like the $35 item was not very popular, right?
No, it was popular. That was one of the transportation topics. So, people, people that voted on that, it was very important to them, because they're spending 35 out of their $100 on that, so...
I was just curious if they talk about whether the ability to get more things funded affects the psychology of people participating in this.
I think if you kind of compare, yeah, if you compare the two exercises...
If I can use 10 or 15, six, to get six things, and I can only use 135 and then do two other things, I'm just curious if they talk about that.
Spending their money definitely changed their priorities. Because if you're not spending money, yeah, you're, you look at things differently. But when it came down to, okay, now I have to decide, this is, this costs this much, they really did have to think harder about what their priorities are. Okay, now, my money's not going to go very far. I've only got $100. So, what are my priorities if I'm going to have to spend money? It's one thing to just say, yeah, these are my priorities. But when you've got to spend money, it did change the way they looked at the exercise.
Okay, thank you.
And I think to address also just statistical sample, yes, this is a very small sample, and I'll let Tarek explain that a little bit better. But we, that's why we wanted to show the representation compared to voters, as well as to the age distribution. We felt like we mirrored what exists in Urbana. But again, it was a small sample. And Tarek, you want to expand on that?
Well, Mr. Quinzenberry, you're probably right. Ms. Wu probably has a better sense of this than I do, but I think...
Speak into the mic, Tarek.
Oh, sorry. You are probably right. Ms. Wu probably has a better sense of this than I do. I think if you put half a dozen statisticians in a room together, you're going to get at least seven or eight opinions. So, with that start, I will just say, this was not intended to be a gold standard, randomized control test. We didn't have the funding, the time, or the staff to do that. And I think the intention was to try to get a better understanding, particularly of underserved communities. And I think to that degree, this was successful. Thank you.
Chandra, you had a question?
I kind of was going to say what you said at the end. The point was to reach people who were not necessarily being engaged in things like this. And so, granted, the 67 number is very low, but I think we got input from those who may not typically give their input or be in a position to give their input. And hopefully, this starts a theme or a trend with them to say that, oh, my, they do value my input. Let me, you know, be more engaged in what's happening in my local government.
I'll kind of expand upon that. We, at the, one that was at City Hall here just last Monday, a woman came up to me, and she says, I have never been to any meeting of my government. And just, I'm eyeballing her age, and then, we talked about age of her kids. I'd say she's probably in her early 60s. And this was the first time that she'd ever come out and engaged in anything with government. So, I think it did. It brought people out that we don't normally hear from.
Mary Alice. All right, so, the magic number that everybody's always looking for is 300. 300 is the magic number. Now, I'm sure there's lots of statisticians that have different ideas. I think, I think it's important, based on what you've said and what Chandra has said, is that we have to make sure that when we present these results and incorporate them into the comprehensive plan, that they're contextualized, meaning that this is not a statistically valid sample. This is something that specific communities who don't normally interact with government, don't normally come to meetings, were asked to give us their perception in terms of how we should spend their money. So, I think that context is really important. And the other thing, and I'm not trying to add meetings to your list by any stretch of the imagination, but if I think about my ward, who are the people that generally don't come to City Council meetings? It's the students, right? And we had our meeting in June, when all the students were gone. So, I just kind of want to throw that out there, that our intended goal, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it wasn't the students, because I know we did it at Red Herring. You mailed people all in the apartment buildings over there, but most of those people are gone during that time, so...
Yeah, and you're correct. And I did kind of skip over that in the slide. We do talk about that, yes, the student population wasn't there. But when we saw the reflection of the age distribution versus what Urbana is, we did hit that age group proportionately to what the current population is. So, interesting. Yeah, the students weren't there, but we did hit a similar percentage of students compared to the population.
The one, one of the ways that I kind of see how this information could be useful is the difference between comments and surveys. There are some people, not everybody chooses to give a long explanation in terms of why they think X, right? But there is, there is a subset of people who want to take the time and do that. And I kind of see this as the same thing. So, rather than looking at this in a quantitative aspect, it should be more taken in terms of a qualitative perspective.
Thank you. Very good point.
Chandra.
Okay. Is the online portal closed for this?
It is, it is. In fact, it was supposed to go off on June or July 31st, but since we had another event, so we extended it a week. So, it closed on the 7th.
Okay, thank you.
Sharice.
Just to kind of piggyback on what Mary Alice was saying, because no one showed up, it's funny, ironic, actually, that no one showed up at our particular scheduled event, because they were at Carl's information meeting. And it was odd to me that Carl would actually schedule that, because our particular thing had been scheduled before that was scheduled. It came on top of, and it, same time, same day. So, different, in different locations. So, many, ironically, many of, much of my community or my ward were, in fact, politically involved, or involved with a community issue, at the same time that it would have been to our benefit to also be involved in something like this. So, that's another reason why I wanted to reschedule, because of the fact that that particular conflict posed more of a... of the fact that that particular conflict posed more of a conflict, too, about what, what people in my ward, that live in my ward, might think regarding these particular issues and where funds should go, and so on and so forth. So that's why I wanted to schedule, if we could reschedule, even just for the benefit of, of the people in my ward, to have the experience of having to make those kinds of decisions.
Absolutely.
I think it would be, um, beneficial, so.
Glad to.
Time for one more comment or question, if anyone has one. Okay, thank you so much. And we'll move on to the third presentation, which is the annual use of force report. And please introduce yourselves for the record.
Sure. My name's Rich Searls. I'm the deputy chief of police.
Hi, I'm Melissa Hendry, and I'm the crime analyst for Urbana Police.
Okay. The computer is mad at us. Andrea, what did you do? Well, while the computer's thinking, let me try to give you a little bit of setup from, from off the top of my brain. Um, resolution number twenty-two-one-zero-two-zero-seven-R, aha. Yeah, yeah. All right. Uh, twenty-two-one-zero-two-zero-seven-R requires the Urbana Police Department to issue an annual use of force report, excuse me, report, and this year's report is the second. Okay, so what is, what is the public saying? Is it, is it the proper one?
Not yet. We're seeing you on the screen. Well, we're, uh, on our screens, we're seeing the report. I'm not sure which screen the public, for that one, so the public is not seeing it.
Okay. Well, we'll just start talking, and hopefully the, the UPTV folks can figure it out. Uh, that resolution requires an annual use of force report. Uh, it was published and it's been posted on the internet, so it is available for consumption by the public. Um, that report was prepared by Melissa Hendry. She pulled the statistics and data for the report. In this presentation, we're going to couple, cover a couple things. Uh, uses of force definitions, policy and reporting requirements, and the data itself. The Urbana Police Department defines force, and this definition is different than federal guidelines, but the Urbana Police Department defines force as any physical effort to control, restrain, compel, or overcome the resistance of another person, including the display of a weapon to control a person's action. It is not forced when a person allows themselves to be searched, escorted, handcuffed, or restrained. Some instances that we characterize as force include things such as if an officer removes pepper spray, a baton, taser, in anticipation of using them, and displays them to a person in an effort to gain compliance, uh, with commands, any situation where an officer removes their duty weapon from its holster or displays a rifle in, uh, uh, an effort to control a person's actions, or any time we point a weapon or a rifle at a person, regardless of whether or not that person is aware of us pointing that weapon at them. There are a few, um, tally marks that, that we, we track. One is called empty hand control, and that contains such things as soft techniques, which are typically grabs, holds, pressure points, wrist locks, essentially the manipulation of the human body in an effort to control somebody, or hard techniques, which include strikes, either with hands or feet. There are other, what's referred to as less lethal methods, that can include blunt impact by the use of a baton or projectiles, the use of chemical irritants such as pepper spray, or projectiles embedded with chemicals, or things that are, uh, referred to in the profession as conducted energy devices or tasers. And then, of course, there's lethal force. Lethal force is defined as any use of force that creates a substantial risk of causing death or serious bodily injury to another person. When the Urbana Police Department and its officers talk about, uh, reporting force, we oftentimes use the standard of Graham versus Connor. What is a reasonable amount of force, what is objectively reasonable, necessary, and proportional for the force to carry out one's duties? Um, our policy also prioritizes de-escalation in encounters. We require our employees to document promptly, completely, and accurately force that they use. Supervisors are required, uh, to, um, review the use of force and make sure it's properly documented, um, by using police reports and body worn camera video, and these reports are subject to review by field supervisors, division supervisors, the criminal investigations division supervisors, and the case management process, and the use of force committee itself. In twenty-twenty-two, this was our distribution of use of force with respect to the use of force committee findings. There were a total of ninety-five uses of force across twenty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-two calls for service, and that equates to zero-point-three-nine, I see Mary Alice scribbling it down, zero-point-three-nine percent of all calls for service involve some use of force. Of those use of force, we found eighty-six were within policy. We found nine required us to provide additional training to the officer with respect to tactics. There were no instances where disciplinary action was taken, and so that total is, again, ninety-five. So then what's the distribution of use of force across those ninety-five incidents? Um, sorry, my bifocals aren't super great here. Uh, the empty hand soft control was the most common at sixty-two, followed up with forty-two instances of a lethal weapon points, or handgun or a rifle. There were seven instances of chemical display or deployment, so pepper spray, five incidents, incidents of conducted energy devices either being displayed or deployed, one empty hand hard technique, which again was a strike, uh, one blunt impact display or deployment, and zero incidents of lethal use of force.
I'm going to jump in and say those numbers don't add up to ninety-five because this is at the incident level. So more than one officer could be involved in an incident, and more than one individual could also be involved. So this is the, the number at the individual level, how many times force was used. So it's ninety-five incidents, and then all of these different types of force.
And I think it's important to know, and this is a question that Chief Boone posed to us, uh, of the complete, uh, of the complaints that were received, the written complaints against Urbana Police Officers, how many in two thousand, excuse me, twenty-twenty-two, it's not two thousand-two, that was twenty years ago, um, none of the five complaints received against Urbana Police Officers in twenty-twenty-two alleged excessive use of force. Are there any questions?
Okay.
Thank you for the, uh, presentation. Okay, so, um, I think you've answered some of these, uh, my questions. I guess, uh, what is the use of force committee would be my first question?
The use of force committee is comprised of several members of the Urbana Police Department that have special training. So for example, we have a controlled tactics instructor, a firearms instructor, a detective, uh, so on and so forth. They've all sort of got their own lane in terms of being a subject matter expert, so we have different perspectives on, on the committee.
And how is that different than the use of force review board?
It's the same thing.
Okay, thank you. I was getting confused on that. Okay, and how often does the use of force review board meet?
They're supposed to meet quarterly.
Quarterly, so four times a year, is it? Okay. And are you guys reviewing, is the use of force review board reviewing body cam footage as well as reports?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, how long is a, a body cam, when a body cam captures a use of force incident, how long is that footage kept on re-, record or stored?
So when an officer uses force, you have to get in kind of the nuts and bolts of how our system works, um, whenever there's an incident, whether it's a use of force incident or not, let's say we make an arrest, we tag that video with certain tags, and the reason you care about those tags is there's different retention periods associated with the different kinds of tags.
Right.
I don't recall off the top of my head what the retention period is for the use of force retention tag. It is well in excess of the minimum requirement by the state, which is ninety days. It's well, it's, and, and so we actually put it in what we refer to as a case file, and when you put it in the case file, it never goes away.
Okay, good, good answer. Um, and I guess ties into my next question, which is can these body cam footage be FOIA'd? But let me qualify that. I'm imagining that children, nudity, mental health breakdowns, and innocent bystanders would have to be edited out of a publicly released body cam footage. So, um, within that context, can these body cams, uh, footage be FOIA'd?
It depends on the circumstances. So the way that the state, um, wrote the body camera law, you have to be a party to the, the video. So for example, if I come to your house and there's a video of you, you can get the video, but Mary Alice can't, because she's not a party to the video.
What about media and lawyers?
No, they're specifically excluded. I, the point behind that, as I understand it, the legislative intent, was to take things off the table like TMZ to sensationalize police work, because these incidents oftentimes involve, you know, a, a bad period in somebody's life, and people don't want their, their personal life out for display. So they limit the, the ability of people to FOIA videos if they're not a party to it.
Well, let's contextualize this a little bit. Um, recently in Rantoul, um, there were two use of, uh, officer-involved shooting events that they have not only publicized, but they keep it on their website for the public to consume, as well as, as you know, the Aliyah Lewis thing back in twenty-twenty is on YouTube. I don't think you've got it on your website, but could you contextualize why those videos are public and maybe ours aren't?
So, you know, when you're talking about an officer-involved shooting, like in Rantoul, for example, um, some of that decision-making is made by the, the, um, the agency itself for, for public need, for public discourse, um, they elect to release video or portions of video. That's pretty common. I think you would find most officer-involved shootings these days have some level of video release.
Okay, so it, it could be an option for the Urbana Police Department, if you felt it was a necessity to educate the public or what?
I, I think that's a fair way of characterizing it, yes.
Okay. Um, so, uh, so after the board makes their determination about a particular use of force incident, does a sergeant then write a report to the police chief about the board's decision?
No.
No.
No. So i- i- and, and just to be clear, the board, they don't, they don't decide, it's advisory to the chief.
Right.
Ultimately, the chief is the finder of fact in terms of discipline.
Right.
And if, if there is a violation of policy.
Yeah, I understood that. Okay. So when an officer chooses to display their firearm at a citizen, and display is just kind of unholstering, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, or point their weapon at a citizen, is that considered to be the officer choosing lethal force even though they don't fire their weapon?
Would we categorize that as a lethal use of force? No, we would not categorize that as a lethal use of force. A, a lethal use of force would be actually applying the force. Me shooting at somebody would be a lethal use of force, whether I hit them or not. Just displaying a firearm is not a lethal use of force.
Does display or pointing, is that governed by the criteria of when an officer is allowed to use lethal force?
Certainly informed by it.
Informed.
Yeah, I mean, we, um, instances where officers elect to display and point their firearm suggests that the officer believes that there is a possibility, at least a possibility, that this might become a lethal force encounter.
Yeah.
Um, there are some instances where it is, hmm, I would say perhaps more automatic. So for example, we conduct what's often referred to as a known risk traffic stop, or some people refer to as a felony stop. Uh, you know, if there's a, I'm driving down the road and I run the license plate on Melissa's car, and Melissa's car has been taken in a carjacking, an armed carjacking, we would stop that car and conduct what's referred to as a known risk stop. That would, based on our tactical training, we would probably be pointing firearms under those circumstances.
So you're looking for a lot of context as to why the officer would pull it?
The decision on whether or not a use of force is appropriate is always individualized and specific to the incident.
Okay. Um, all right. Um, so the resolution that was passed by the previous city council on February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, that requires this annual use of force report prescribes a bare minimum of data points, and your department dutifully supplied those bare minimum data points. But there's a problem with supplying just the bare minimum, because what can happen is along comes an ignorant civilian doofus like me, who probably looks exactly like me, and when this doofus looks at the annual use of force report, they can draw the following conclusions. In twenty-twenty-one, Urbana Police used all types of force on a hundred and fifty-six people in a hundred and twenty-five incidents. Of those a hundred and fifty-six people, a hundred and fifteen people, or seventy-four percent, were African American. In twenty-twenty-one, eighty-one, or sixty-four percent of the hundred and twenty-five incidents of all types of force involved displaying or pointing firearms at citizens. The Urbana Police displayed or pointed firearms at eighty-nine citizens. Of those eighty-nine citizens, seventy-five, or eighty-four percent, were African American. In twenty-twenty-two, Urbana Police used all types of force on a hundred and seven citizens in ninety-five incidents. Of those hundred and seven people, seventy-nine, or seventy-four percent, were African American. In twenty-twenty-two, forty-two, or forty-four percent of the ninety-five incidents of u-, uses of force involved displaying or pointing firearms at forty-two citizens. Of those forty-two citizens, thirty, or seventy-one percent, were African American. This is an incomplete story, and it's understandable that only ten months after Aliyah Lewis or George Floyd, the Urbana Council, City Council would prioritize the type of force police use and who police use it on. I would recommend adding the following data points in future annual use of force reports. In the aggregate data section, I suggest including the number of calls for service and the number of arrests for that given year. So for example, in twenty-twenty-one, it could have been listed that there were twenty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-seven calls for service and four-hundred-and-fifty-three arrests to better contextualize those one-hundred-and-twenty-five incidents of force. In the disaggregate section of the data, especially in the displays of firearms or the pointing of firearms incidents, I would recommend indicating whether an arrest had been made, what type of criminal offense was the person arrested for, whether an illegal weapon was seized, and whether a complaint had been filed and appealed to the civilian police review board. Those would be my recommendations for future annual use of force reports, and thanks for letting me speak, and I'll give everybody else a chance. Thank you.
Mr. Evans, can you repeat number three and number four under?
Yeah, 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 sure. Um, let's see, and this is in the dig, disaggregate. I'm going to say, uh, let's see.
Arrest, arrested for what?
Yeah, arrested for what, and then whether an illegal weapon was seized, and whether a complaint had been filed with the civilian police review board.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, Chandra?
All right, thank you, and you, and you put the statistics away too soon. Can you?
I'm sorry.
Can you bring that back up? I'm looking for the bar chart.
Bar chart again.
Yep. So here's my, my question. On, on both the lethal weapon point slash display and the taser display or deploy, um, I would, I don't know if we asked for this in the original res-, the requirement for this, but I would like those broken out, because actually, de- for this, but I would like those broken out, because actually deploying the taser is significantly different than showing the taser. And then showing a weapon versus pointing a weapon at a person, I also feel has a distinction with merit.
I can tell you off the top of my head that we had no officer involved shootings in 2022. So the answer on lethal weapon point slash display, those are all points.
Those are all?
Those are all just weapon.
There's no distinction between, like, pulling your gun out versus pulling your gun out and leveling it at a person?
Well, and Melissa can tell me if I'm wrong here, but I, my understanding of point versus, oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking point or display versus deploy.
Yeah, they're not exactly the same question that I asked.
Nonetheless, we had no officer involved shootings in 2022.
So is there a distinction between showing someone your weapon versus actually putting it in a position where if the trigger was pulled, it would be lethal?
Not the way the data is currently complied.
Okay, all right. I do think it's relevant with the taser, though. Because I assume you know the difference between whether it was shown or?
Deploying is actually pulling the trigger.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Chandra.
That was literally my question, and I would also say the pepper spray too, between display and deploy. And then also, this may be an obvious question, but use of force like this empty hand soft, that typically leads to an arrest or detention, correct? Like that, use of force typically happens during an arrest or detention, or is there, to Chris's question about, this usually happens during an arrest. So if you were to break down the arrest from the cause, like, are all the use of force in those arrests, or does it typically, you know, a use of force may lead to just, I don't know, a release? I don't know.
So to go back to the question at the very beginning, is it typical that there's an arrest from me putting my hands on somebody? I think the answer, generally speaking, is probably yes. I would, and this is based on me not digging into the data, do you know offhand? I'm guessing the answer is the majority probably involve an arrest. There are instances where we put our hands on people where we might not arrest them, though.
But that wouldn't be categorized as a use of force?
Again, it's situationally dependent. It is conceivable that I put my hands on somebody and I don't arrest them.
Gotcha. I think that might be a little worth knowing, too, in the data.
Mary Alice?
Well, thank you, both of you, for putting this together. I appreciate it. It was, this continues to improve every time, so I think that this was really helpful.
Beats the alternative, getting worse.
In addition to the annual report, there was also a civilian for the use of force board. I know there had been some conversations about who would be on that, if you could give us an update on that?
Yeah, so, and this is included in the memo that I sent to council at the end of May. There were five sort of things that we needed to tick off from the resolution. The first was prioritizing de-escalation. We have trained on de-escalation, we continue to train on de-escalation, we fully implemented ABLE, we've got a few officers that we need to still get through because they were in the police academy, or we just hired them as a police chief, or whatever, but just as a hypothetical. And so we're going to do a makeup session for that, and so we've got officers that we need to continue to train, and then the next round. I talked to Lieutenant Mikulik about this. My best guess is that we're probably going to be doing something related to ABLE probably every six months, whether it's a new introductory class or an annual refresher. So with respect to Section 1, de-escalation, it's in our policy, and we continue to train to it. Number two is the incorporation of a civilian in the use of force committee. Yes, we have had Scott Dossett involved. One of the things that I spoke about in the memo is that I underestimated the magnitude of incorporating a civilian into the use of force board. You know, when you've got people looking at these things, you need to provide training, and there needs to be, you know, a level of understanding, and so we're still trying to work our way through that process. Mr. Dossett has been kind to give us more of his time after so many years of giving us his time, and I think he's on the tree commission now, too, isn't he? Yeah, so that is a work in progress. Section 3 requires the report being submitted, that's obviously why we're here today. Section 4 requires a review of the use of force policy once every five years. We're not at the five-year mark yet. And then, section number 5 requires changes to the use of force policy being presented to city council, and we haven't done that. I say that, I think there was a typo in there that I corrected, but there's been no substantive changes, so those are all the different sections of the resolution.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Melissa, in 2021, you distinguished between rifle displays and pistol displays, and then in 2022, you didn't distinguish those two. Is that, are we just going to lump them all together from now on, or do we know?
There were some decisions made when we were trying to go through and categorize everything, and that made sense to put together. If it's the preference of everybody that we split it out, I can, we can go back and do that for 2023. It's such a small number, it's, you're looking at ones and twos.
Any other questions? Alrighty, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now have a good night.
And will you be able to send this?
Yep. Give me a few minutes and I can get it into your inbox.
Great, thank you. Chris?
I was going to suggest maybe we reopen public input, since there are people here that maybe wanted to do that, I don't know, just.
I was going to do that, yeah. This is a last call for public input, since we did start presentations within five minutes of the meeting starting. Okay. All right. We'll move on to council input and communications. Chris?
This will be the last time for this announcement, but yeah, I want to remind folks that this Thursday at the Phillips Recreational Center, 505 West Downton, Thursday, August 17th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, will be the community meeting about the Mid Barrier Homeless Shelter that is going to happen at 410 West Springfield Avenue. See you at home, will have representatives there to answer anybody's questions and address their concerns. Again, that's this Thursday at 6:00 PM at the Phillips Recreational Center. Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right, we'll move on to the Committee of the Hall report. Chandra. I'm sorry, reports of standing committees, there are none. We'll move on to committee of the hall.
Okay, on behalf of the Committee of the Hall, I bring forth a whole agenda of consent featuring Resolution Number 2023-07-075R, a resolution authorizing city intervention in pending property tax assessment appeals before the Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board, Huntington Enterprises PTAB docket number 2022-02834, ordinance number 2023-08-024, and ordinance vacating an alley between 714 and 802 Wabash Avenue, ordinance number 2023-08-025, and ordinance vacating an alley within Victory Park, ordinance number 2023-08-026, and ordinance amending Schedule M of Section 23-190 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, tourway zones, Green Street from Wright Street to Lincoln Avenue, and lastly, ordinance number 2023-08-027, and ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, modifying the number of Class R and T-1 liquor licenses for Encanto Restaurant and Bar LLC, doing business as Encanto Restaurant and Bar at 115 West Main Street in Urbana, for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Chandra, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Percy?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Chandra. There's no items on the regular agenda, there are no reports of special committees, reports of officers. Carol?
I just have a brief announcement. The CU Public Health District has asked us to help promote an event that they're having on August 31st. It's a Narcan drive-through event. They're going to be passing out doses of Narcan to the general public. It will be from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, again, August 31st, at their facility at 201 West Kenyon Road, and it'll be on the south side of the building. You can just drive up and drive through, and they will give you free doses of Narcan.
And I just wanted to thank Senator Faraci and Representative Ammons for helping, supporting the DMV to organize a mobile unit located here at the city building about a week ago. The DMV was quite pleased with the turnout. We had a number of walk-ins from the public, plus a number of employees were able to use the services as well, particularly in getting real IDs. That seemed to be a popular request. So again, the mobile DMV was located here in this Urbana City Hall, and we're pleased with the turnout, and expect we'll probably do it again in the future. So thank you for helping to promote that. Last item on the agenda are appointments, and I have one to the Urbana Free Library Board of Trustees. It's for a term ending June 30th, 2024. It's for Glenn Lane Worthy. Glenn's a three-year resident of Urbana. He holds the position of Associate Director for Research Support Services at the Hathi Trust Research Center, which is in the School of Information Sciences at the U of I. In his role, he's responsible for managing daily activities of a nationwide consortium comprising academic and research digital libraries. He supervises various development initiatives and fosters collaboration with fellow experts in the realms of digital libraries and digital humanities. In his statement to the city, he included the following. I have, quote, "I have spent my career working in and with some of the country's greatest research libraries, and although my professional focus for most of that time has been digital libraries, I have likewise always been an avid reader and collector of print and archival physical collections. Despite the occasionally popular notion that the days of books and libraries are past, I count myself among those who strongly believe otherwise, backed up by both evidence and ethics. The Urbana Free Library is a true gem and an essential resource for our community. It would be an honor for me to serve on its board as an advocate." So I would put forth his name for your consideration and a motion.
Sharice?
I would like to submit for the appointment to the Library Board of Trustees, Glenn Lane Worthy, for the term ending June 30th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? Will, can we do this on a voice vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Thank you very much, and with no further business before us, this meeting is adjourned.